Thank you. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Yes. Mr. Bureau Patel.
Present.
Mr. Romano.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Present.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Opening statement.
Yes. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act 1973, C-231 Sunshine Law, the Edison Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education Administrative Office. Copies of this notice were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger.
Thank you. At this point, we will adjourn to privileged session. In accordance with NJSA Section 10412, the Edison Township Board of Education adjourns to a confidential session for the purpose of discussing the following: personal matters and superintendency evaluation. Motion to adjourn to privileged session.
Motion.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Patel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
So we'll adjourn now, and we'll expect to come back shortly. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Ms. Patel.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Present.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Vice President Romano.
Here.
Mr. President Patel.
Here.
Everyone's here.
Thank you. First, I'll do my report, and then we'll move on to Dr. Alderelli. So, welcome to the Personal Reappointment Meeting, May 7 Action Meeting. As we celebrate Teacher and Nurse Appreciation Week, I want to express my heartfelt gratitude to our teachers and nurses. Our teachers' dedication to students' growth and success, along with their hard work, passion, and commitment, play a very crucial role in shaping the future of our generation. Similarly, our nurses' exceptional care and support for the students' health and well-being ensure a safe, happy, healthy learning environment for every single child. Thank you so much to all the teachers and all the nurses, and you all do a great job, and we can't thank you enough for that. So Happy Teacher and Nurse Appreciation Week. Thank you so much. I'll pass it on to our rock star, Dr. Alderelli.
Thank you, Board President Patel. I just want to echo the sentiments of our Board President in relationship to honoring our teachers, our school nurses, as well as all of our support staff and everybody that makes the school district one run smoothly and effectively. Thank you so much. I know that this is a week that we honor you and formally recognize you, but we do recognize your efforts each and every day. So thank you for the work that you do. And I just want to also take a moment to acknowledge our Board President, Mr. Bureau Patel. He was honored, I think on May 1 by the Middlesex County School Board Association for Certified Board Membership. Is that correct?
Right.
Arduous process. Yeah, round of applause. I would definitely, I think that that shows his dedication to not only the work that's done up here, but also his commitment to professional development and his commitment as Board President here in Edison Township. So didn't want to let that go unnoticed. So congratulations. And that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Alright, so now we will move on to, before we go on to public comments for the resolutions, we have one more resolution that is being added today, and I will let Mr. Toth read it.
We have a read and resolution to certify tenure charges on May 7, 2024. Sworn tenure charges against employee number 103410. Here and after the sworn tenure charges, together with a sworn statement of evidence in support of the charges, were filed with the Board Secretary of the Edison Township Board of Education by Dr. Edward Alderelli, Superintendent of Schools. And whereas, on May 7, 2024, a duly convened meeting, the Board of Education considered the tenure charges and sworn statement of evidence in support of the charges against employee number 103410. Together with the statement of position and supplemental statement of position of employee number 103410, counsel submitted on his behalf. And whereas, on May 7, 2024, the Board of Education determined that there is a probable cause to credit the evidence in support of sworn tenure charges, and that the sworn tenure charges are sufficient, if true, to warrant the dismissal and/or reduction of salary of employee number 103410. Now, therefore, be it further resolved that the nine-member Board of Education hereby certifies the sworn tenure charges against employee number 103410 to the Commissioner of Education. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby suspends employee number 103410 without pay effective immediately. In accordance with the provisions of NJSA 18A:6-14, the Board of Education approves said vote.
Board President, if I could just add two items with regards to that. One, I note that the employee at issue has requested that this vote be in public. Normally, tenure charges are the only things that the Board can actually officially do in closed session. They've asked for this vote to be in public session. And I'd also note that the employee's attorney is here, and I would recommend to the Board that, to the extent that normally the attorney would have the right to speak at, you know, normal public session, but I understand the Board is probably going to, you know, vote or take action on this. Now, I would recommend to the Board President that we open up and we allow Mr. Kalak, who is the attorney for the employee, if he wants to say anything to the Board, to allow him to do that prior to the Board voting, rather than voting and then having Mr. Kalak speak at the closed session. And that would be my recommendation to the Board.
Thank you. So that can be a part of the public comments, right? The attorney can come during the public comments for resolutions.
Yeah, I just want to make sure. It depends on if the Board is going to vote on this resolution now, prior to everything else. I would just make sure that Mr. Kalak, as the attorney for the employee, has an opportunity to speak prior to the vote, rather than afterwards.
Okay.
If you're going to vote on it, you know, as part of your other agenda package, then you can do it later. Just, Mr. Kalak is here.
Alright, so that being said, alright, anything else you want to add? Matt? Anything else you want to add? Good. Alright, so that being said, we have this resolution that was read by Mr. Toth and Mr. Mensch added things. So we are going to now do public comments on resolutions only. Attorney of the employee in question will have the first opportunity to come and speak for six minutes if you would like to add anything. Go ahead. Please recognize yourself.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Paul Kalak. I'm the attorney for the employee that you were referencing. I didn't expect to be at the meeting tonight, so excuse my dress. Board of Education, I implore you not to vote on this resolution tonight. There's been offers of settlement to resolve this matter, and I truly believe that the parties can come to an amicable resolution regarding this matter. I have major concerns with the way these tenure charges were served. I have indicated that in my statement of position of March 8, 2024. It's clear that these tenure charges were not served properly. They were in complete violation of the law. I identified that in my March 8 statement of position. The charges were attempted to be cured afterwards. Let me just tell you why they weren't served properly. They need to be certified and signed. Initially, when they were served upon my client, there was no signature, and they were not certified. Clear violation. About three weeks later, my client received a FedEx with two pieces of paper in it, signed certified pages. That's in violation of the law. If you wanted to cure the ineffective improper service, what should have happened is that new tenure charges should have been provided to my client, signed the way they should have been. Then, I would have had 15 days to respond to that, and then you would have had 45 days to act as the Board under the law. I just need to tell you as a Board that if you act on this resolution tonight, it is completely in violation of my client's rights, and you as a Board put yourself in jeopardy and liability. You have 45 days to act after you've served the charges. You are outside of the scope of your 45 days, completely without question. You're outside of your 45 days. Also, I need to remind you, counsel said that my client wanted to compel the vote of this in public session. Not true. What my client wanted to do was compel the discussion of this matter into public session based upon a rice notice that he received saying, "If you want it in public session, let us know." He did that. However, please note, Board of Education, please, that no discussion or vote on a tenure matter can be taken in public session. It's in NJSA 18A, it's in NJAC 6A. No action could be taken in public session on any tenure matters. None. It must be in executive session. The fact that you take it in executive session now will automatically mean this matter gets dismissed, if you certify it and if it goes to the Commissioner of Education. So if it gets dismissed by the Commissioner of Education, all the work that was put into these tenure charges and all of this action will be for naught, because everything that's been done up to this point, again, repetition is the essence of education, is in violation of my client's rights. So again, my ask to the Board at this point is, do not vote on this resolution now. Table it. Continue to talk to me through your counsel, whoever that may be, and let's find a way to resolve this. Because if it moves forward, it just gets ugly, there's more litigation, and the Board of Education is going to find itself in liability that I'm begging you not to be in. I don't want to be in this position. I want to settle this matter amicably and make it go away. Not here to beat up on the Board and beat up on counsel. I just want everything to move smoothly towards an amicable resolution, and I've been begging for that for months. I know this can be done by the Board. So please, do not take action tonight, because, one, it's illegal, and, two, if you do take action, it's just going to engender more unnecessary litigation for this Board, which I know you have way more litigation than you want to even think of right now. Please don't add another one to your list.
Thank you. Any more comments on public, oh, sorry about that. Yes, Mr. Mensch?
The only thing I want to say on that, as I agree with Mr. Kalak with regard to, I would like this vote to be in closed session. I guess Mr. Kalak and I were not on the same page with the difference between the rice notice, the discussion, and the vote. So I have zero objections to the Board, you know, voting on this in closed session based off of what Mr. Kalak said and my agreement with him with regards to the law governing votes on this matter. You know, the rice notices was the issue about public discussion versus that. So based on Mr. Kalak's comments with regard to voting in closed session, I don't have any objection to that, and would recommend that the Board do that, which was, you know, my preference.
Mr. Mensch, would the recommendation be to go to closed session?
Yeah. Yeah, we can do that. We can, you can do it at the end of the meeting if you want to at this point. I mean, I don't think you have a lot of agenda items, so you could get through the rest of your meeting if you wanted to, and then go into closed session at the end solely on that issue for the vote. There would, just be aware that based off of the rice notice, and it was confirmed by Mr. Kalak, if the Board wanted to have discussion on the item, you know, a debate about it or a discussion, that would need to take place before you go into closed session, which again, you could do at any point in time.
Okay, so let's go to closed session towards the end.
Or can I? I know I have six minutes, and I didn't utilize all of it. Thank you.
So we will, the Board will discuss in the closed session. You can always come back out if you decide to do so, but let's, for now, we want to move on to other agenda.
Yes, but just to be clear, when the Board goes into closed session on this, because the employee has asked for discussion to be in open session, when you go into closed, this will be like a 30-second closed session. It will be a roll call vote. Board President, I would suggest we do that now, if it's only going to be a 30-second vote. It would have to be, because we can't have any discussion on it in closed session. So if the Board's ready, you can adjourn. We can literally walk to the back, vote, and come back out.
If it's a 30-second, if that's for your recommendation, then we'll do that.
We can do that.
Yeah.
The only problem, folks, the only problem, the only problem with that is you sent him a rice notice and you requested, asked him if he wanted discussion to be held in public. Once you send that rice notice and that discussion is asked to be compelled in public, it's to be held in public. But you can't take any action in public, but you can't just switch around and say, "Oops, sorry, my bad. Now we're going to hold it in public session." You would have to wait until the next meeting to do that. You can't cure it just like that.
We are going to follow our council's advice.
The Board's going to vote.
Yes, you don't.
The Board's going to vote based off of your comments that the discussion was the only thing requested in public, but the vote should still be held in closed session. That's what the Board's going to do.
Alright, thank you. So that being said, motion to adjourn to privileged session.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We'll quickly go to the closed session. Recommit to open session. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Here.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Here.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes. Present.
Mr. Brian Rivera.
Present.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes. Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Ms. Peng.
Here.
Vice President Romano.
Here.
President Patel.
Here.
Have a quorum.
Now we'll move on to public comments on resolutions only. Harish? No, not you, sir. Sorry. Harish, go ahead.
Hi, Harish Thakanyi.
Oh, we broke.
45 Michaelis Reed. I am pleased to see that money has been allocated for JMI turf, but it disappoints me that the bathroom renovation thing has been tabled or canceled, whatever it is. Also, regarding JMI, I wanted to point out that we have one of the oldest and the rotten, most rotten trailers in which Spanish music, bands on strings, and even the GNT, the reputed GNT classes are being held. So I would really appreciate if the Board and the administration could take some decision about moving on, moving ahead with the Phase 1 construction projects. I know John Marshall and JMI were one of the top priorities among the elementary schools, but recently, we are hearing different things about new schools being pulled into that construction plan.
Right, so this is for the resolutions only? So you can, yes, mention about the turf fail, but we'll move on to public comments for, when you can mention all that at that time.
Okay, so how about the bathrooms?
Yes, you can talk about bathrooms. Oh, that's not in today's resolution, so no.
Okay, so I guess there isn't much to talk about resolutions.
Thank you. Any more public comments or resolutions only? Jerry?
Jerry Shi, Edison. I see a finance resolution to go ahead and do the Success Academy. So through the chair to the Facility Committee, what is a rough idea per square foot for the roof? Can answer later.
Mr. Shi.
Yeah.
The gentleman over there, his name is Mr. Haas.
Yes.
You can give Mr. Haas your contact information, and I'm quite sure I'll be able to contact you.
Okay.
Thank you.
But any other comments on resolutions?
Yes, I'm glad the bathroom is off the list. No induction either. I know what he will do to twist the facts. So for the record, upgrading the entire district's bathroom was decided last year under the leadership of Shannon Penn. It started last summer, and more were upgraded just last month. I suggest to Doc Schneider, the Chair of the Facility Committee, is to ask the Facility Director for a plan listing when the bathrooms will be replaced in the next couple of years. This will help the Board, funding accordingly, to avoid last-minute allocation, since it will cost millions. A lot of times, the co-ops do not offer best practice, best prices. It is okay to bid, and if too high, switch back to co-op. But make sure the administration team is proactive, so you have more time to it. The Board members are elected to provide oversight to the administration team. Oversight is not interfering the day-to-day operation. If the district is giving out millions-dollar worth of work, the committee should request the administration team to provide more than two proposals. Two proposals for a million-dollar project, I don't think is sufficient. Use our taxpayers' money. If you do not have the guts to say that to the administration team, because you have multiple family members working the district, then you should not sit there. Please do not use interference as excuse. To make the district run well, oversight is a must. Trust but verify. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments on resolutions? Saying none. Motion to end public comments on resolution?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Next, we will do motion to approve personal report for all, if you have any conflicts, just go through the page and say the page number and section number, or whatever suits you otherwise in this section. So motion to approve personal report.
Motion.
Mr. Romano.
Second.
Second, Mr. Vishal Patel. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes, with the exception of all of my known conflicts, as reported on the School Ethics website through the state of New Jersey. I will note those exceptions. Thank you. Yep.
Ms. White.
Yes, with the exception of my conflicts, my two conflicts.
Noted.
Thank you.
Ms. Peng?
Yes.
Mr. Romano?
Yes.
Vice President, or President Patel?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Alright, thank you. Congratulations to everyone who got renewed. Motion to approve Administration Curriculum and Instruction Pupils Services Report.
Motion.
Mr. Romano.
Second.
Second, Mr. Schneider. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes, except abstaining from the, this item, my item.
Noted.
Yes.
Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Patel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next is motion to approve finance reports.
Motion.
Mr. Vishal Patel. I'll second it. Roll call, Mr. Toth.
Mr. Lugo.
Yes.
Ms. Anjana Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Vishal Patel.
Yes.
Mr. Rivera.
Yes.
Mr. Schneider.
Yes.
Ms. White.
Yes.
Ms. Peng.
Yes.
Vice President Romano.
Yes.
President Patel.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That concludes all the motions for approvals. Next, any Board member comments? Mr. Rivera.
I just want to wish Happy Teachers Appreciation Week, and I also want to recognize our kids. I hope they're sleeping, they're getting rested up for NJSL testing, and best wishes to everybody testing and everybody that's administrating. It's a tough week, and I hope you guys get through it, but we appreciate you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. White.
I'd like to congratulate our teachers and our amazing nurses for all their hard work and everything that they do. You know, we so appreciate you guys, all of you. You're just so outstanding. And I would also just like to remind everybody, too, we all know that the subscription busing started for May 1 and it's ending June 30. You know, if you have any issues or problems, I know a really good letter went out, and it was very clear, very thorough. Please use the Help Desk. That is what it is there for. It's there to help you, and it should make your life just a little bit easier. Okay, so don't hesitate to use it. And that's all for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Vishal Patel.
Want to add on top of what Genie said, right? Some of you, if you have not received the email about subscription bus, just open a Help Desk ticket, and they can make sure that you receive it next time or get the copy of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, now we will open to public comments. Shivvi?
Shivvi Madukar, Allison Court. I'm here.
One moment, please. I apologize. Anybody that wants to talk about transportation, please go see Mr. Haas. Mr. Haas will take your name and your contact information.
Yeah, Mr. Romo, let the public comment start, and let the people speak, and we'll see what they speak about, because we don't know what the speaker is going to speak about.
Shivvi Madukar, 9 Allison Court, Edison. First, I would like to begin by expressing my gratitude to all teachers and nurses for what they do. And the second, I want to talk about, I've been getting a lot of messages from a lot of parents about, you know, their subscription busing getting canceled or not getting it. And I'm just here to remind the Board about why those subscription busing exist in the first place. Now, many, many, many years ago, these were called hazardous routes, and they were called hazardous routes because it was not considered safe for children to walk to school, children living in those neighborhoods. They had to cross a railway line, there was a lot of traffic, high speed, there was, you know, Route 1. So, but at that point, the hazardous routes were funded by the state. So the state gave money to the school districts, and they were designated hazardous routes in every district. Now, around 2010, 2011, when the funding was taken away for these hazardous routes, Edison School District decided to convert those routes into subscription busing and charge the parents for those bus routes. Now, parents are getting emails, oh, sorry, they're getting messages saying that those routes have been canceled because they don't meet the mileage requirement. Well, mileage was not the reason they got the busing in the first place. They got it because these routes were hazardous for them. So I would request the superintendent, if he could, you know, work with Transportation Department or whatever you could do to ensure that children are not, you know, put in harm's way because they have to cross these busy intersections. And that's all I'm here to say. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Alderelli, you want to comment on that?
Just a brief comment. So that actually sheds a little bit of light, to be honest with you, on a subscription busing process, as well as a street index that Mr. Toth and I kind of inherited without rhyme or reason as to why certain streets and neighborhoods got transportation for free on a subscription route and why others didn't. And as you know, last year, in order to provide equity, we moved forward with the 1-mile and the 1.2-mile. I have had conversations, not only with the Board President, but also the Chair of the Transportation Committee, that these will be items that will definitely be discussed moving forward. One of the things that I can, that I can easily stress is that we take student safety as paramount. It's one of the things that are the most important things that we do here in the district. So those will be part of our discussions in the Transportation Committee. With that being said, regardless, I mean, I would urge parents to fill out that subscription route anyway in the process if you haven't done so, if you were in one of those areas. We will review all of those pieces moving forward, and... and follow through accordingly. More information will be forthcoming in relationship to those as we kind of move forward, not only with conversations with our Board, but with our committee as well, too.
Thank you. Next for public comments. Yes.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone, and gratitude to nurses and teachers. My name is Rinky.
Your name?
Yeah, my name is Rinky, and I live at 47 Gatehouse Lane. I'm here to support and raise a concern that recently I learned that-
Take your microphone.
Okay, recently, I learned that, okay, did you hear my name?
Yes.
Okay. Good. So, listen, I live, oh, I'm sorry, it's too much, okay. I live in Park Gate, which is close to, next to Enclave Community. And I learned that the subscription bus has been taken away for Woodbrook and Woodrow Wilson. And the path to Enclave, to Woodbrook and Woodrow Wilson is hazardous. So, that was the ground they were given the subscription buses at the first place. In continuation of what Shivvi just mentioned, and I think it should not be taken away, it has taken a huge toll on the parents. And they just got a surprise that subscription buses has been discontinued. And they feel helpless, so we are here to support, I am here to support them. And then I would pass it on to Amrish. He's going to explain the hazardous path to, from Enclave to Woodrow Wilson to Woodbrook. Thank you.
Good, thank you. So, regarding the subscription bus getting taken away, so I think the street index that was changed last year was changed with an intent to bring, to give more subscription busing, to have more students opportunity to have buses, if there are buses and drivers available. So, I doubt, unless Mr. Toth or Dr. Huss, or Dr. Eldrally wants to correct me, I doubt that with any, with just the communication going out, that go ahead and apply for busing, the district did not intend to take away any buses. I would really encourage you to speak with Mr. Huss, and share your contact, and he will really get back to you on that.
Okay.
And definitely fill out the busing subscription if anyone wants it. Thank you.
Good to hear. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next. Yes.
First of all, thanks to the Board members and respected-
Your name, sir, name and where you live?
My name is Amrish Gandhi. I'm a resident of Kingswood Court, Edison, Enclave White. So, just going back to the comment that I heard-
Can you take your microphone near me?
Sure.
Just come near my microphone, so we can hear you.
Yeah.
Little, little more.
We had a subscription busing option, I mean, this year, my kids are going using the subscription busing option. And if you go to the parent portal, there is a form there that you need to fill in in order to register for that. That was taken away, which was there last year. We called in Transportation Department. They clearly mentioned that your street index has been removed from subscription busing in the upcoming year. So, that's how we have come to, I mean, that's how we are aware that it's removed. If that's a mistake, yes, we will definitely talk to him. But I just wanted to confirm few things before we go further.
Like, once again, come near the microphone, because you may not be able to be heard on the video if you're too far away.
Okay. So, what I was trying to communicate here is, as per the New Jersey School Don't Design Chapter 2, the things that are considered hazardous is high-traffic volume. Like, if you go on Talmage Road by Enclave, I will tell you, in the morning times and the afternoon times, especially when the schools are like off, and when the schools get in, you won't find a second where you won't see a car cross that intersection. Like, it's impossible to take left turn for us in our cars when we try to get out of the community. So, the kids, I don't believe, can at any point in time cross that. The second point that this article says is traffic speed. The speed limit on that road is 35 miles per hour, and people are always speeding there, at least 40, 45 miles, trying to get their way across. There is a bus stop, active bus stop right in front of our gate. Many times, cars don't even honor when the bus is waiting, kids are boarding. I have video evidence, we are working with traffic police on that. They have given us assurance that they will look into the matter. There are kids who try to cross to get into the bus. Cars don't yield for pedestrian there, so it's that hazardous. We have a blind turn right on the Talmage Road by Enclave, where the traffic is going this way. So, any kid that wants to get into our community in the afternoon, just, it's an accident waiting to happen. It's a big trauma if somebody gets hit by the cars, who just don't seem to care about pedestrians at any point in time there, unfortunately. They are in a rush all the time. So, these are the three key reasons why a kid, elementary kid, who, I mean, who doesn't even understand how to cross a road when the cars are going at such high speed, I don't think it's safe for the kids. So, that's why I was just like, recognize that the Board understands the gravity of the problem. If it's a mistake, that's fine, I'll talk to the person you mentioned. But if it's not a mistake, and if this has happened knowingly, then I just want to make the point that, please do consider bringing it back. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, so the safety of the students should be at utmost priority, and we have to really take that very seriously. So, I'm, thank you. So, I'm really very confident in Dr. Huss's ability, because I'm personally aware, in last few weeks, he has visited, followed certain bus routes, and, you know, visited certain parents and students, and seen, really taken that as into consideration. So, yes, I'm hoping Dr. Huss, if you can connect with the residents, and take a visit, and see what you find out, and, you know, take a connection from that point on. So, we really hope it works out for all the parents. Thank you. Next for public comments, Joyce?
Judiciaryship Freeman. First of all, I would like to give great extra kudos to the nurses from Robert Wood Johnson, who withstood four months of being outside and for the patient ratio. They were very concerned about us, all of us, and they endured a lot for the four months. So, for those nurses, plus all the rest of the nurses, I want to give an extra clap for them. I also would like to mention the teachers in the school, because the teachers take a lot. They have the parents, they have the administrators, everybody they have to answer to. So, I give an extra, extra clap to them also, think it's a lot. And they were talking about the hazardous busing. I know, I'm back in the old and buggy days, but I think it would be good if we had more sidewalks in Edison. That's what we're lacking. We're lacking sidewalks. Because I know, I walked out in the street a couple of times, young, and you need to have sidewalks, so somebody, so, you know, cars, some people are not paying attention, distracted driving, all that. So, that's one of the things that we really, really do need. And a question I asked last time, that I was looking for the answer for, is how much you spend for your website, and how many people do you serve at that particular website? Thank you.
Thank you. So, I forgot to answer a question last time about the website. I believe it's around $40,000, so, from the information I got from RB, roughly around that ballpark.
It's actually just under 40.
Under 40? Okay, thank you.
A lot, the entire community.
It's a huge school district, beyond. All right, thank you. Next for public comments. Yes, sir. Please recognize your name and address.
Can you hear me clearly? Good evening. My name is Gautam De. I live at 41 Ravenswood Court in Enclave. First of all, my admiration for the Enclave teachers and the support staff for helping our kids to grow. And as well as, I'd like to take this opportunity to express our gratitude for introducing the before-care and after-care. We never got an opportunity before, so thank you very much. My neighbors have already expressed their comments, so I just wanted to add that if cost is of any factor, we would be fine if you introduce a tiered fee structure in case Enclave residents have to pay a premium, because they are closest to the school. There is a valid comment, at the same time, we need to take care of the safety of the kids. So, we should be fine, and we will welcome that decision very much. But final decision, we will definitely defer to the Honorable Board. Thank you for giving us this opportunity.
So, thank you for speaking about that. I know Harish is also here, and he also, in the past, mentioned about the tiered structure. So, just so everyone knows, the cost of subscription busing is $6.25, but it ends up the district paying much more for each busing. So, not a bad idea, it's not my decision personally. It's something that needs a lot of research, homework, and, you know, this administration has to come out with different, different thoughts and ideas. But to put it out there, the cost is really not that. The district pays a lot more money for per student, probably double, close to double, right, Mr. Toth? For a student to be transported for the subscription busing. So, thank you for the comments. Next for public comments. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Board members. I'm Smriti Kumar from Copper Creek Court. My neighbors have already mentioned our concern regarding the subscription busing for our kids of elementary and middle school, and I'm glad that you have taken cognizance to the fact. The only thing I am concerned about is that the Board member just mentioned that the forms, we can, we should still fill up the forms, and the forms should be available. Whereas, when we tried to contact the Transportation Department, we raised tickets and everything, we were told that because of the 1.25-mile decision, that we cannot even fill up the forms, we do not get the forms. So, I wonder how are we supposed to fill up those forms, and where should we get those forms? Because, as you know, if we don't fill it up, we'll again be at the losing end of not getting anything, once the decision is made. Thank you.
Can you please give your comment and all your contact information, Mr. Haas?
Okay.
Mr. Haas will make sure that happens for you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much.
Right, so, and I also encourage, in that case, to, I will work with Superintendent Dr. Eldrally about a communication, in district-wide communication, in what to do in case the form, someone has not received the form, because we don't want anyone to miss out later on that reason. And also, while you are here, while everyone is here, like Mrs. White says always, help the ticket. And we want, we intend to, in our Communications Committee, we intend to go over that in the next meeting, to go over what are the transportation help tickets, sir, and really look into that further. So, yes, help the ticket, see Mr. Huss while you are here, see Dr. Huss. And yes, let's work on a communication to send a link out, district-wide.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Board. My name is Saujanya Konala. I'm also from the Enclave community. We actually tried to raise the Help Desk tickets, and all of us got the same response, that we are not eligible for the subscription busing. So, there are like more than 50 families who have been affected by this decision. Tonight, I have brought a petition, signed by all of them, and I just handed it over to the gentleman over there.
Thank you very much for your comments. Thank you very much for your help.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much. So, Dr. Eldrally, can we please work with the Transportation Director and make sure the Help Desk ticket response is not standard, like what we have been hearing here, like, you know, you're not eligible? Let's hold on, on response, unless your team and Dr. Huss and everyone work into it, so that people don't end up getting that same response.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you. Next for public comments. Anthony?
Right there.
Anthony Diamon, 25 Wiley. I just wanted, you know, I just was looking through this. I see that you guys renewed some of the SROs, School Resource Officers, and that's terrific. I remember when we had the debate a few years back, whether or not we should have them in our schools or not, and very lively debates. You got, that Board made the right decision, clearly. And I, you know, someone who sees it firsthand, the schools are pretty damn secured. So, that's, that's, that's kudos to you guys, so I, thank you for doing that. And just something off, little off-topic, but it's concerning to me, because I went to school here, I graduated in 99, and I noticed, I believe Susan Sarandon, the actress, is in the Hall of Fame and here at school, and I think she should be removed immediately from the Hall of Fame. Her rhetoric is just absolutely disgusting. It's just, it gets worse and worse. I suggest people just, you know, do a simple Google search on her. But it's something that I hope, I don't know whether the Board has any control over that, or, you know, Mr. Ross, but I could, I could give you a list of 100 other graduates that went to school here who are, who have gone on to do some terrific things for the community. And I could also assure you that her values are not the same. She don't share the same values as most of us in this community. And it's, it's, it's really tough to watch sometimes, and, you know, I don't, somebody actually just happened to pass it along to me. I don't, I don't follow or anything, so. But, you know, she, she represents, you know, she's in the Hall of Fame, she went to school here. And the fact that we honor her is just, I think we could do a lot better job here at this school. So, I think, whether it's the Board, again, or Mr. Ross, hopefully, they at least look into it and consider that. And that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Board President.
Thank you. Next, public comments. Harish?
Harish Thatineni, 45 McKinley Street. So, besides busing, we are also hearing a lot of concerns about the bathrooms, and that's the reason I tried to interlink that earlier, anyway. So, without taking the names of the schools, unfortunately, as someone joked a couple of months back, the pot and potty are kind of interrelated. It's disgusting, but that is true. And we need to see some serious action and steps, firm steps in that regard. I mean, 10 years back, there was a famous, rich Democrat doctor donor, Democratic donor, who had this meeting at his or her place, and then we came up with the idea of web detectors. I know, a couple of months back, we were planning to install those. The requisition went out, and we also know that unfortunately, they won't work 100%. So, I have a couple of crazy ideas. First one, I'm just mentioning it for the heck of it, because I know that's never going to happen. If the bathrooms are common for staff and students, this problem will be resolved by more than 50%, trust me. And I know that this is not going to happen, and already, a lot of administrators, teachers are already cursing me. So, let's come back to a more practical and realistic idea. Can we have a supervisor-level person taking frequent rounds of bathrooms, especially in high schools, both the high schools? That should resolve some of the issues. I mean, if there is no punishment, there's no fear, then why would everybody follow the rules? There is a penalty and punishment for everything, for every law, every policy that anyone breaks, either in the society, or corporate world, or government, or anywhere else. So, please consider this second idea. That should be doable. On a lighter note, Dr. Eldrally, I'm absolutely not trying to imitate you or Mr. Jeff Brazos. It's just the temperature. So, talking about temperature, we have to go back to our favorite old topic of fans. We had this long discussion, AC versus fans, we agreed on the fans. We already had two 84-degree days. Summer is coming, predictions are that there will be, it will be 3, 4 degrees more this year. And of course, they are also predicting a lot more hurricanes, but that's a different thing. So, any update on the fans? I keep coming here, I have been coming here for the last nine months. I have a list of nine things, which I haven't received any updates from either the BOE members or the administration. So, for some reason, everyone seems to be in a good mood today, and I see that some questions are being answered, so I will try my luck again. I will read that list. One is the fans, second is auto-email when we raise a Help Desk ticket, or when we fill out the subscription busing form. Then I talked about respective school principals or their delegates going and checking the food quality so that we can improve the food ratings. I mean, I feel like I'm repeating myself, I'm just barking here every month, and it's like I'm talking to a wall. I can keep on talking for like two hours, explaining in detail each of those nine things, but we need some responses. The amount of time our lawyer spent two months back in explaining why Board members need not respond, or administration need not respond, in that time, we could have answered 3, 4 questions. Anyway, less than two minutes. So, there are a lot of other facilities, updates that we need. Jams traffic, started, not started. Jams after-care- Jams aftercare, the walkway, slabs, low-cost item. I don't see that for some reason. So, some great things that you guys have done is obviously the help for the non-privileged students, the online help about that. But I'm not very sure how many people are sold on the parent university. So, there are other things which I can meet and talk, but if we are not going to get any responses or no action is taken whatsoever, then what's the point of even allowing the public comments? So, going back to the facilities, most important thing. Phase-one construction, JMI and John Marshall, they were the priority, they should be done. I'm hearing new requirements about some ten classrooms in some other schools, which are not in phase-one. As much as I hate to say this, but I will say it in a polite way without taking names, either of people or schools. Just because some BOE members are up for elections, it doesn't mean that all the funds need to be diverted to schools in those areas. If we keep on breaking our own rules like this, that would be a shame. We agreed upon a long-term facilities plan. We allocated that. We also agreed that there are some, some more fine-tuning needs to be done to the demographics report. There are a lot of issues in that. So, why are we changing things now without completing those things first? Either you change the demographic reports, report by ordering a new one, by including more factors, or stick to the original plan and do the phase-one first. Thank you.
Thank you. So, yeah, since you acknowledge that we're in a good mood today, I'll answer some of your questions, Dr. Eldrally, who is also in a good mood, will answer some of your questions.
So, unlike Harish, who chose to shave his head, mine actually just never grew back in. So, I applaud you. It does look good on you, though. Yeah. Just a couple of quick highlights. Listen, any building principal that reaches out in relationship to the utilization of fans, as long as we have the bandwidth in there, you know, we have no problem in purchasing those pieces, but it's got to be based off of a need, right? So, as long as, the building principal is always, always the liaison to those types of conversations. I will tell you that I literally have staff, I hired staff to just clean bathrooms in the high schools. That's all they do, is they rotate. There are extra staff members that do it on a rotation basis. I believe there are substitutes that come in and clean high school bathrooms. I can tell you, I've been in Edison High School and in JP Stevens on numerous occasions over the last couple of months. You know, listen, they're relatively clean in relationship to a boys' bathroom. I have two boys in my house. I can assure you that I wish that bathroom was cleaner as well. But I can tell you that if they are dirty at a particular time, they are being routinely cleaned at that, at the middle, at the middle school level. It's probably something that we can look to do as well, but we haven't gotten any formalized complaints in that capacity too. But it's something that we would definitely look at. I know there was nine of them, but I'll touch base a little bit later on.
Yes, so, Dr. Haas here, he is not the only transportation guy. He's Assistant Superintendent of Operations. So, I think what we can do is between now and next board meeting, you should also reach out to Dr. Haas and meet with him. And Dr. Eldrally, if he's not busy with the parent university, maybe he can join as well. So, you know, you guys can talk and, you know, let's see how many issues we can sort out. Thank you so much for, you know, serving for the community. Next for public comments? Yes, go ahead.
I have given my introduction. My name is Ranki.
That's fine, you are recognized.
All right. Thank you, Harish, gentleman. I have been thinking about, talking about cafeteria issue
The time, whatever she had left.
For a very, very long time. My son was in elementary school, he's in high school. He will prefer to stay hungry, but he would never eat in cafeteria. And he does not take lunch also from home because he likes to eat hot food. So, he would not take all day long. So, when he was a child, his preference was a tasty food. So, he complained food is yucky, it's not yummy. And as he grew older, he says, "It's not healthy." So, it's not tasty, it's not healthy. So, we definitely want to bring your attention, sir. My kid is, has been complaining and I heard from many parents. But you know what? We are, we are so busy in our life. We just are happy if we, our kids get a transportation and they are come back, coming back safely, we're fine with that. And we do not really come for every other, every small things. It's not small. My kid is hungry all day long, and it has been happening for ten years now. And I, today I'm here to talk about it. And that too, when this gentleman came. So, you can understand that parents do not come for, you know, even the big things. We come when we feel that our child is not safe. Another thing is AC. With the chain board members, I have faith and belief that AC will come back. Please bring AC to the schools. Our kid definitely, they work so hard, they do deserve AC. This is a minimum requirement and minimum, you know, we can expect from school when we are paying so much high taxes. When we look around other cities, they have ACs. So, we are not asking anything more. This is very minimum we can ask for. So, please bring AC. We'll not be happy with fan. Please put fan for now, but please bring AC.
All right, thank you. So, someone wants fans, one wants AC. That's great. So, here's the thing about fans and AC.
I think everybody wants AC. Can you raise your hand?
Right, so, you can have a seat and then I'll respond to your comment.
Sir, one more, last. I have not finished my six minutes, did I?
Oh, you're allowed three minutes. This is your second timeout.
I apologize. So, whoever keeps the clock did not do it right the first time, so.
I wanted to say bathroom too, thank you.
Yes, and you can connect with Dr. Haas again. He's not the only transportation guy. He's Assistant Superintendent of Operations. But just to, just to touch base on that point, right? So, AC, fans, and these are all the points we all, as board members, also hear from the community, right? And, you know, hear from the staff members, very valid points, right? Harish, you touched on the construction, right? We have phase-one, phase-two, JMI, JAMS, EHS, Marshall and all the schools, or any of the schools that are remaining down the road, right? Should we do, should we put ACs on the schools? Yes, one hundred percent we should put ACs in the school. Should, wherever feasible by structure, by architecture. Should we have fans? Yes, until in the meantime, the principal should request fans. Should we upgrade all these schools? One hundred percent we should upgrade all the schools. We should have the best of the best facilities for our students, right? From four years now, four years, we have zero percent tax increase. Your tax dollars have not gone up one single penny from the school portion of the taxes, right? So, if the board had increased taxes from four years, I am a part of this board from last four years where we had zero percent. And I declared about this last meeting. If the board had increased two years from all the four percent, including myself, you know, I would have had paid more taxes myself too. But then some of these facilities would have came to the schools, right? But when, I personally, I can speak for myself. When I speak with the residents, which one you like, people say, "Oh, yeah, 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 we pay too many taxes." So, definitely not the taxes. There is always a trade-off, right? There is finance. Fortunately, we have been getting good amount of stated, due to which we were able to move forward. Now, let's touch base another point which I mentioned earlier. Subscription busing, cost district almost double. So, the district pays a lot more from the general budget towards subscription budget, subscription busing. So, everything is a cost, right? It will be really nice to have all those things, but at some point collectively, it really comes down to the money, the finance, right? So, again, I'm personally not in disagreement for any of this, but the board together has to eventually, you know, start working on things, the board and administration combined, according to its priorities. But great points, and thank you so much for coming here so you can express your concerns about all these things. Dr. Eldrally would like to share something.
So, in, I just talked with Board President Patel in relationship to JMI and phase-one. JMI just went out to bid currently right now, so we are moving forward with those pieces. We are in the process of going ahead and doing that. Mr. Toth is finalizing some of those pieces in relationship to meetings with the architects. I don't know if Mr. Toth wants to elaborate?
Actually, yes, tomorrow, we'll be meeting with USA Architects to put together their bid timeline, get the bid out on the street. So, hopefully, we'll be awarding that in June.
Thank you.
Mr. Toth?
Yes, Mr. Toth.
What's the timeline on new switch gears for JMI? John Adams, Ben Franklin, Lyndon All, Edison High? Do you have any timeline on those? For people that know or don't know, switch gears are the electric power that's coming into the buildings. Now it jams. We need more power in the building so we can put plugs in, so we can put fans in. That's been discussed for well over two years by yourself, sir. The fact of the matter is, is that switch gears is the electric that's actually in your house. But when you have to upgrade your electric in your house, it's the same thing as upgrading the electric in a school system. It's just not just put another plug in the wall. I wish it was that easy. We are doing everything we can to make this happen. Thank you for your comments. I really appreciate them. But people have to realize, we have a limited amount of budget. And you are correct, the amount of taxes that you pay. But can you do me one favor? I'm not asking for a lot. I want you to look at your tax bill. I want you to see what your local levy is for school taxes. Then look at your county and your town. You break that up. You look at it. And then you take and decide how many children you have, which is fine. But you have to take everything into realization. You have to look at it all. So, the taxes that you pay and the subscription busing that you pay only half. We're doing everything we can to keep the zero tax increase and upgrading our plants, which would mean upgrading our school system, upgrading the turf fields, upgrading everything in our system. We're doing everything that we can. It's not the amount of taxes that you, I, please, I can take and raise your taxes by six percent. I'm quite sure the auditorium would be filled. The fact is that we're doing everything we can. And if you want air conditioning in the schools, I have no problem. Get up, stand at the podium right there and say that you will not stand for the schools to not be air-conditioned. Then, when we don't have the money, I have a way of doing it. It's called a referendum. You take and vote for a referendum. Probably five or six million dollars per facility, maybe more for a facility this size. And then you come up with, "We don't have enough classrooms." So, please, understand. What you want is understandable. I do, I understand it. We can only do what we can do. You do deserve a school system that's air-conditioned. Absolutely. I do know that the, that the climate is going up by two or three degrees. I know that. I wish we could stop that. But the fact is, is that we do not have switch gears big enough. And the best part, this is the best part, PSENG will not give us switch gears big enough. They've actually already, they've actually told us that they're not going to give it to one of our facilities. They just don't have the electric. There's not one board member up here, not one, that doesn't want to take and improve the school systems. But the fact of the matter is, you don't understand. The problem is, there's not an understanding by the electric companies, by the power, the power that we need. So, please, work with us. When the decision is made, listen to it. We'll discuss it with you. No problem. But we don't have the power. See, at home, you just have another plug, or you put an extension, or you take and you put another box in the wall, okay? And you put, instead of two plugs, you put a box that has four plugs in it. We can't do that in our schools. We don't have the power in any of our buildings. Some of our buildings have a plug in the front and a plug in the back of the classroom. With the technology that we have, it's just not enough. Please work with us. Please come out. Please come out. And if, if in fact, there's a way to get more electric in the schools or to improve the size of our schools, there's not a board member up here that's not going to go to bat with you. But the fact of the matter is, is what I heard tonight. With all the taxes that I pay, the fact of the matter is, if you take your tax bill and you break it down, you'll see, the school taxes aren't a problem. Thank you, I'm sorry to take up your time.
Anyone else, public comments? Jerry? After that.
Since you guys are in a good mood today, I got to take advantage of that. You answer questions. So, first...
Mr. Haas will take all of your questions and your contact information.
You can pick and choose. Look at that piece in the ceiling that has been there since January. When can we get that fixed? That's question number one. Second, we've been asking about the bus tracking system. Can we put a damn air tag on a bus? So, we don't have to spend the money to buy all these different softwares?
Mr.?
And, wait, my time. So, both vice presidents mentioned about power. So, just in the same line, where's the, the update on the solar panel installation of the nineteen schools?
We can't give you power.
Mr. Kumar, let him finish his comments.
Go right ahead, Jay.
Let's give you fifteen seconds back.
You can have, you can have whatever you want.
He's going to ask for time, so let's let him finish his comments.
Thank you, Joe. So, you know, Harish mentioned about the development plan that was put in by Doug Schneider two years ago. And in that plan, we caused ten classrooms for John Adams schools. And right now, there's no, no John Adams on the plan. So, Doug Schneider is not even following his own, own plan. Just change the topic a little bit. There's an election going on, which is the teacher union president election, which started yesterday. And our BOE member, Doug Schneider's brother-in-law, Bill Donner, is running for the president. So, the members, you know, in the union, think about it. If Bill Donner becomes the president, Doug Schneider cannot do anything. He has recused himself from all the issues.
I recuse myself now from all union issues. Nothing changes. Thank you.
All right, so, okay. No, you don't. Not all union issues. So, there are, I saw the A flyer with a ship on it, and it was very disturbing. There are a couple of areas that Bill Donner mentioned about. One is about the salary. First, Bill has never involved in any contract negotiation in the past ten years. He lied on the flyer about the percentage increase. He should be noted, the district has taken steps to ensure very competitive salaries for our new teachers. And we address the long-term concerns for the non-certified staff and provide a fair contract for the rest of the staff. It is crucial to, for the member to set realist expectations and understand, if you think Bill Donner can have twenty percent salary increase across the board, I'm letting you know, that's not happening. Second, he talked about building morale. Having a pleasant working environment starts from the top. Jeff Bowden, who has worked in the district for forty years on his retirement party on Friday, he said, "This district has the best, one of the best administration teams right now." And Bill Donner just did the opposite. He tried to paint this is darkest, darkest time. But please remember, it was his brother-in-law who tried very hard to not get Dr. Eldrally appointed as a superintendent. He wanted to get the interim superposition to someone who's retiring. If any of the JP staff thinks you had a bad leadership in the past two years, the full... the full credit goes to Bill's brother, Doug Schneider. A very qualified, excuse me, it's my platform, a very qualified candidate applied for JP leadership position. When Doug Schneider found out the candidate was Chinese, he went to this candidate's social media site and dug out a picture with this person speaking and me and Shannon on a background. It was a protest against anti-Asian hate. And Doug and his wife used all his connections to work with the person who's in charge of the interview committee to make sure this person does not come out. And right now, this candidate is a principal in one of the highest performing public schools in New Jersey. And talking about facilities, Doug never submitted the JP Stevens expansions. The facility committee did not have a meeting for seven months when he was the chair. No input from the supervisors, no input from the building principals. Now, the new labs in JP are too small to fit for wet labs. So, Doug should get all the credit for all the debacles at the building. So, the question to the union member is, what will Bill Donner do when you actually need him to represent you? Seeing the actions of his own brother-in-law, you should know the answer. Again, you know, Harish mentioned, John Adams, JMI, Marshall, they were all on a phase one plan. Now, they have been, you know, John Adams has been dropped. JMI was ready in January. Right now, we're just going out to bid. Five months after. Winter time is the best time to bid with the best price. Now, the price probably going to go up by two, three million dollars. So, you know, just when you go to the, when you go for the ETA, vote for the ETA president, please remember who you're going to vote for. Voting for Bill Donner will bring the ETA ship down to the bottom of the ocean. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Beth Talke, Fifteen Midwood Avenue. I'll change the mood of the hall right now.
Talking about insurance?
Thank, no, I can bring that up. I'll ask you after that. I'm sure you guys have made your decision. It was done May first. I'm hoping it's good for all. Just to once again, thank all the teachers and the staff of our great town, Edison, for Teacher Appreciation Week, for all our certified, non-certified and all our staff. It's got to be great because I've stayed here my whole life, educated here, stayed here for my kids and I still continue to work here. So, thank you to all of our teachers and staff for all they do for our kids every day. Secondly, I just want to bring up, a lot of parents here tonight complain, you know, not complaining, voicing their concerns about cost of busing, cost of, you know, food, air conditioning in our schools. Is there any way we can go back how we did in the olden days and in our minutes and stuff that we publish kind of show more of where the money is being spent like we used to? So that maybe the public would have some more awareness as to where the money is actually going? That there's such a big pile and it's being spent here, there, you know? Salaries, insurance, facility, something broke, you know, just to even like our contractors and stuff like that so that they would have some idea more specifically of where the money's being spent. And that's all I have to say. Good night, thank you.
Thank you. So, the budget, Beth, is online on the district website to take a look and, you know, you can certainly take a look. I think the audit report is also on the website, right? Everything goes on the website. If there is something missing in terms of that, please let Mr. Toth know and you can.
No, no, nothing. Just doesn't seem to be as user-friendly as it used to. And I remember, Mr. Toth, your first year here, your big budget presentation. You got up here and really explained everything. Seems like it's been toned down a little bit. So, just, you know, if it was more available for everybody to see and easier to find, it would be great. Because I know we're working new with those, what, that new doc? The board doc thing? And it's really hard to kind of maneuver it and find everything. So, just, you know, to add ourselves transparency, all this stuff. Let's let the public, you know, know where everything's going. That's it.
So, with Heather here, yeah.
Real quick, the presentation that I did is on the website with Dr. Alder. You'll see all the, all the stuff that goes into the capital projects. I think there's, I actually think.
I remember your first year coming here and now here and.
We thought this year's was better.
I actually thought this year's was better. So, I'm a little hurt, but I actually went into a little.
I apologize.
That's okay, it's all right, it's fine. I'm hurt all the time. But I thought I did a better job of going into a further detailed explanation of the local fare share and how we're under the local fare share. There's a slide on there. Take a good look at that. So, when we revisit this in a year, you'll understand how we closed the gap and we did it with all that state aid that we've, we've been getting. It's a good slide, check that out.
I'll recheck it, but thank you.
I think you have my number. You can call me with questions.
Thank you, thank you. All right, anyone else, public comments? You have ten seconds, okay? You go for ten seconds.
My time got interrupted a couple of times. I still have ten seconds. Just for the record, Beth, the committee, the finance facility committee worked with him on the presentation. We spent hours on his presentation. That's why it's good.
That's ten seconds. All right, any, any other public comments?
Dawn Penny, second vice president-elect for the ETA. And ETA members would really appreciate if the public would stop commenting on our internal elections. They are not public elections and nobody other than an ETA member needs to discuss them. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Saying none, motion to end public comments.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.